We are ready.
Good evening, everyone. And welcome to the May 16, 2017 Glendale City Council meeting being called to order at 6:05. May I please have the roll call?
Councilmember Zagajanian?
President.
Devine?
Here.
Najarian?
Here.
Sananian?
Here.
Mayor Garpetian?
Here.
May I please have your report? Before the report, Mr. Mayor, if you allow us to be led in the flag salute led by Council Member Sananian.
Please join me in renewing our pledge of allegiance to our nation. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation on the God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation. May is Asian Pacific Heritage Month, a time to honor the contributions made to our country by immigrants and citizens who trace their roots back to Asia and the islands of the Pacific. California shares a particular important part of this Asian-American experience as it served as a gateway for so many as generations have come to the U.S. and made this their home, traveling across the Great Pacific Ocean from China, Japan, Vietnam, Cambodia, Thailand, Korea, and the Philippines, among many other places. Their story has become our story across the U.S. and even as near as in Glendale, where our only known Medal of Honor recipient is from Glendale, an American of Japanese descent, Sadao Munemori. He served with honor and valor in the Army during World War II while his family was held behind barbed wire under guard in an internment camp back home. Yet despite these types of paradoxical experiences, Asian-Americans have persevered and risen, often without great fanfare or attention, to great heights in public service, education, literature, athletics, entertainment, arts, and culture. Asian-American author Amy Tan once said that, quote, "We dream to give ourselves hope. To stop dreaming, well, that's like saying you can never change your fate," end quote. This is not a quote for Asian-Americans, but for all Americans, and it is a lesson worth relearning from the experience of Asian-Americans. Let us pray for all that Asian-American experience has done to enrich us with and for ways it continues to help us grow and prosper into the stronger nation we are today. Also, we pray for our men and women in our armed forces. Please keep them from harm and return them home safely to their families soon. We pray for peace and harmony here and around the world tonight and always. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. And now, may we please have the report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The agenda for the May 16, 2017 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council is postponed Friday, May 12, 2017, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Okay, and what's next?
Presentation and appointments. At 3A is agenda previews for the meetings of Tuesday, May 23, 2017. As it stands right now, we have no regular Housing Authority or City Council meeting for May 23rd and, as it stands currently, for May 30th as well.
And what is next?
At 3B is a proclamation designating National Public Works Week.
Who's going to receive the proclamation?
Yes.
Okay.
You should have the proclamation?
Yes, let me read through the proclamation. Read the proclamation first, then give you a chance to say a few words. It says, "Whereas public works projects and services are critical to the growth and quality of life in the city of Glendale and are an integrated part of our citizens' everyday lives, through the efforts of our Public Works Department, Glendale remains a safe and comfortable community in which to reside. And whereas the support of informed citizens is vital to the efficient maintenance and operation of the city's infrastructure, including operations such as maintenance services, fleet management, engineering, traffic signal management, facilities management, and integrated waste management. And whereas the employees of the Public Works Department are committed to providing daily infrastructure services in a quality manner, and whereas a well-planned, designed, and maintained municipal infrastructure is vitally dependent upon a team of people dedicated to professional excellence, customer satisfaction, and who strive to accomplish their everyday tasks efficiently, effectively, and with accountability to the community they serve. Now therefore, I, Vartan Garpetian, Mayor of the city of Glendale, do hereby proclaim May 21, 27, 2017 as National Public Works Week and call upon all citizens and civic organizations in the city of Glendale to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in the providing for our local infrastructure and to recognize the contributions which Public Works officials make every day to the betterment of our residents, health, safety, comfort, and quality of life." National Public Works Week, that was a long proclamation. Oh, my God. I just want to congratulate you and thank you for everything you do for our community. You're the, one of the largest departments in our city that keeps our streets clean, maintains our roads, the trees, the integrated waste, and pick up the trash on time, clean our streets, and we want to thank you. You guys do a lot of work for us, and without you, this Glendale wouldn't be what it is today, so.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. On behalf of Public Works Department, we are happy to receive this proclamation. Every year, the Public Works Department recognizes a group of employees for their exceptional work, and I would like to introduce this year's winners who are joining me today. I have Lena Gugostium from Public Works Engineering, Cynthia Torres from Public Works Integrated Waste, Alina Morschidian from Public Works Administration, Bolaji Srojobi from Public Works Facilities, and Jerry Kemp from Public Works Street Maintenance. These employees will be receiving an Outstanding Employee of the Year Award on our Public Works Employee Breakfast on May 18th, which is this Thursday. Each of you have an invitation in front of you, and we hope to see you there. Thank you. [applause]
If I may, Mr. Mayor?
Of course.
I just want to let Public Works know that this is one of the departments that I received the most positive emails about the work that you do in the city. People see you around doing things, and so congratulations on your week and thank you for your service.
Councilmember Sananian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sometimes we have, well, I think we've gotten so accustomed to the high level of service that we receive from our Public Works Department that we tend to take it for granted. But every time I cross over to the city of L.A., I'm reminded of our Public Works and I'm reminded in the most favorable...
Be careful.
Hey! There is a difference, and it's noticeable. So, great job. Keep on doing what you're doing because you're doing it very well.
All right. And what's next?
Recese is proclamation designating Bike to Work Day.
Okay. Hey, I have a proclamation for you, and let me read the proclamation and then we'll give you a chance to say a few words as well. Whereas the month of May is National Bike Month, and cities across the nation will be hosting events and promoting Bike to Work Day on May 18, 2017. And whereas the city of Glendale proudly promotes biking as an alternative transportation mode through Glendale Employee Ride Sharing Program incentives, implementation of Glendale Bicycle Transportation Plan, Citywide Safe Routes to School Program, and Citywide Safety Education Initiative in an effort to reduce the number of trips made in a single occupant vehicles, improve air quality, promote driver, bicyclists, and pedestrian safety, and to encourage physical activity. And whereas the city of Glendale actively encourages bicycle use by offering free bikes, free bike rides on Glendale Beeline buses and by installing bicycle lockers and racks throughout Glendale. And whereas the city of Glendale has committed to encouraging the youth of community to ride their bicycle by providing bicycle safety rodeos in local elementary schools and organizing a Bike to School Day. And whereas the city of Glendale is committed to educating those who walk, drive, and bike in Glendale to do so in a safe, smart manner throughout its B Street Smart Glendale campaign. And whereas the city of Glendale, for more than a decade, has offered a pit stop location for Bike to Work Day and worked the local partners to provide information and support to bicyclists who stop in Glendale. And now, therefore, I, Vartan Garpetian, Mayor of the city of Glendale, do hereby proclaim May 27 to be Bike Month in Glendale. So, yes, speed round.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is Sean Resyans, and I'm one of the employee transportation coordinators with the Community Development Department. And with me, I have Sissien Arzumanians, our other employee transportation coordinator, Kate Bridges, the interim executive director of our local Transportation Management Association Go Glendale, Eric Isayen and Tazri Portio Rabanov from Walk Bike Glendale, and Mark Lorenzo, one of our employees that bikes to work every day. We here to thank you for the proclamation for Bike to Work Month, and in addition to supporting the call for a more environmentally conscious city by encouraging residents and guests to find alternative modes of transportation. Biking helps to reduce traffic congestion, is environmentally friendly, and is a healthy means of exercise for everyone. Bike to Work Day is coming up on Thursday, May 18th, and the city of Glendale is sponsoring a pit stop which will be on Broadway just outside City Hall, where we will be serving light refreshments for anyone stopping by with a bicycle. In addition, bicyclists can ride for free on the Beeline on May 18th if they provide their bike or helmet when they board the bus. Now, I want to pass it on to Kate from Go Glendale. She's going to give a quick announcement about the pit stop that they're going to be sponsoring.
Good evening. Thank you, council members. I'm Kate Bridges from Go Glendale, and we will also be hosting a pit stop. We will be outside of 400 North Brand. We'll be serving some breakfast items, and we'll have some information for people about safe bicycling tips and some other things about how to get around Glendale. So, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else?
Thank you so much, city, for the proclamation. We also want to just recognize family with us, Eli Lester and his wife Christine, with their son Julian, their active family who are very involved in Walk Bike Glendale and also bicyclists. They're one of many of our families who are very involved in the community in terms of biking. Thank you. And also, Roberta Medford is with us as well, and she's one of our honorary members.
Does honorary mean she doesn't bike, she just is a member?
She's one of the walkers.
All right.
Councilmember Najarian?
And in addition to our Beeline offering free rides, this week, Metrolink, which has now a bike car on every series of trains, is offering free rides throughout the system wherever you want to go. So, it's something that we're working on in the city, as well as the county, through Metro and Metrolink.
Right. Congratulations. What's next, please?
3D is a proclamation designating EMS Week.
Okay, who's going to receive the proclamation? Oh, my God.
Fire department.
The entire fire department is here. We're safe. Who's putting out fires? All right.
Yes.
Oh, my God. Let me read the proclamation first, and then we'll give you a few minutes, maybe a couple of hours to speak. Okay. This proclamation reads, "Whereas emergency medical services EMS is a vital public service, and whereas access to the quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas EMS plays a critical role in public outreach and injury prevention and is evolving in its role as an important member of the healthcare community. And whereas first responders, emergency medical technicians, and paramedics stand ready to provide compassionate, lifesaving care to those in need 24-hour a day and seven days a week. Whereas the members of EMS teams, both career and volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education and enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of EMS practitioners by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore, I, Vartan Garpetian, Mayor of the city of Glendale, do hereby proclaim the week of May 21, 27 through 27, 2017 as Emergency Medical Services Week."
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of city council, city staff, my name's Vince Raffino. I am the Emergency Medical Services Section Chief, and I have the privilege of standing here today to say a little bit about the men and women that serve our community. First, I'd like to introduce Raú Claros, the Executive Director of the American Red Cross for the Northern Valley Chapter. Teresa Murphy, Chief Nursing Officer at USC Verdugo Hills Hospital. And of course, in the back, our fire chief, Chief Greg Fish. He has a big day coming up Thursday, but we're not allowed to really talk about it right now, so.
We roasted that a little bit. Get it started.
So, I am here to say thank you. We cannot do it without the cooperation of our Red Cross, our local hospitals, the men and women that serve our community. This past year, our men and women went out, just under 19,000 calls to the community members to serve them daily, and they do it with pride, they do it with a lot of professionalism. Just a little tidbit I wanted to give you. Just recently, we started providing a higher level of service to our community members, and that's called through SFTP, the Standard Field Treatment Protocols. There are a very small number of departments in Southern California that are allowed to give this higher level of service, and our paramedics go out there daily. There are 16 protocols, and we at Glendale provide 13 of these protocols. And all of these protocols, they achieve a QI, a quality assurance of 95% or higher on all 13 of these protocols, which that in itself is a huge accomplishment for our paramedics. So, I just wanted to say...
Thank you so much. And as we speak, they were called, they were called out, so a lot of them have gone on an emergency call. Thank you all for what you do, saving lives, the wonderful thing.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Lastly, next Wednesday at Fire Station 21, we're having a little get-together, which hopefully you're all been invited. We're having the little taco man coming for our annual appreciation, so please join us. It starts at noon.
Well, we attended the open house last Saturday, and it was another great success, like every year. I don't know how many, 5,000 to 6,000 of the residents?
Yeah, we flipped a few cakes.
How many, Chief, how many pancakes did you cook?
We figured about probably 8,000 to 9,000.
8,000 to 9,000. That was a great event. It's a community event, brings the community together, and first hand, they see...
Pancakes were great.
They see how you operate and what's going on with our fire departments. Great job, great job.
Thank you very much.
What is next, please?
Next is nomination assignments for board and commission appointments. These are nomination assignments, co-terminus with the council members who were recently elected or re-elected, so it would be for council members Najarian, Sananian, Zagajanian, and they are for the Boards and Commissions of Art and Culture, Audit Committee, Building and Fire Board of Appeals, CDBG Advisory Committee, Civil Service Commission, Commission on Status of Amen, Design Review Board, Glendale Water and Power, Historic Preservation, Parks, Recreation, and Community Services, Planning Commission, Transportation, and Parking.
So, I'm going to give the floor to our senior council member, Mr. Najarian.
Senior council member will be reviewing all the applications, and I note decisions have been made or no nominations are ready to come from myself. I do encourage anyone who has any interest in this broad range of commissions to please submit their applications. This doesn't mean I'm throwing out the incumbents, but it means that I'm taking a broad look at everyone who's interested, and I'll be, over the next few weeks, I'll be placing my nominations before the council.
Okay. Mr. Sananian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, at this time, have no nominations to make. I will also be looking at all the applications, encouraging everyone to apply. I'll be looking at the applications with an open mind, and this is a great opportunity for anyone who's interested in civic participation, and I'll make the nominations when I'm ready.
Okay. Councilmember Zagajanian?
I also do not have my nomination list, and I will do it during next meeting, whenever that next meeting will be, I will announce my nominees. Thank you.
Okay. I do have a question regarding commissions and their position. Is there a term limit on the commissioners as to how many times they can serve? Because I remember we had it two times, and then it changed. I think the clock restarted when council decided that every individual council member would choose his or her commissioners, and the clock starts from that time. Just wanted to clarify that because it was asked...
Sure, Mr. Mayor, that's essentially correct. So, when the process was changed in 2009, that initial term for when council members nominated commissioners, that term didn't count, but then after that, it was every, it was two consecutive terms. And then again, even then, there's a process in the code by which the council can make a finding that it's necessary to appoint a particular individual beyond that two-term limit. So, it's two terms unless the council makes a finding that they want to appoint somebody for a third term and make a finding.
Can you provide us that language for that finding?
Will do.
As to what the finding will be? Okay. Councilmember Zagajanian?
Can you replace nominee or the commissioner?
Well, the council always reserves the right, always has the right to, with or without cause, to remove any commissioner. But for the commissioners, the board and commission members that were appointed by the prior incumbent, in your case, those can all be replaced by you.
I know, but I'm talking like two years down the road, you want to replace a person? There's no problem to replace...
Correct. Well, at that point, it requires the council to remove that person or just replace the individual. It doesn't fall on the individual council member.
So, we would have to vote. If you wanted to remove a particular commissioner, it would have to be by a majority of the council members.
Okay. So, no nominations this week. What is next, please?
Next is the consent items, including minutes following our routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such request before motion is proposed, or this includes the minutes.
Okay. Is there a motion to remove the consent items or consent calendar, or is there an item that you'd like to pull?
I would like to pull, Mr. Mayor, item number 4B.
4B?
Thank you.
Okay.
Yes.
Is there a motion to move the rest of the calendar?
I'll move the rest of the calendar.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Members Zagajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sananian?
Yes.
Mayor Garpetian?
Yes. Would you please read 4B?
4B is General Manager of Glendale Water and Power regarding inspection and overhaul of landfill gas compressors 101A and 101B at Shaw Canyon. B1 is resolution adopting specification number 3634 for the inspection and overhaul of landfill gas compressors at 101A and 101B at Shaw Canyon, and direct the city clerk to advertise forbids.
Councilmember Sealan?
Well, anything that relates to Shaw Canyon and the landfill and the gas compressors, I think, needs to be aired out in the open, otherwise we risk, we risk folks suspecting that something's happening without their knowledge, or this somehow has something to do with some type of expansion. So, let's do it in public.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, councilmember Sananian, this is the annual maintenance of the two compressor facilities that were installed in 1992 to collect and compress the landfill gas and then push it into a pipeline that transports it to Grayson, where it is burned, co-mingled with natural gas, burned as boiler fuel, and generates electricity. So, as the units age, and these are pretty old units, we've gone to an annual maintenance of those. So, you'll see here where we've put two years, it's a limited number of years anticipating the potential that we will replace these with new units and more efficient units as part of the overall Grayson repowering project. So, we've just gone two years. We're not committed to the two years, we can do one year at a time, but this, we think, will get us through at least till that decision point the city council will have next year.
Okay. And how efficiently is this system working? The compressed gas being pushed out to Grayson, how much gas are we losing on the way?
Councilmember Sananian, it isn't inefficient in that we lose gas. The gas itself that's generated, the landfill, is very poor quality. So, the process of transporting it to Grayson... So the process of transporting it to Grayson and putting it into the main generating units is a little bit less efficient because you have to blend it with natural gas, which means we then only get half the credit for it on an RPS standard, which is the renewable portfolio standard. And it's very corrosive to those units. So what we're proposing with the repower is that we put in specific units at the landfill that burn that gas, and that are built to burn that gas, and they can then produce the electricity right there at the landfill and put it into the grid. So we will no longer transport it, or we're proposing to no longer transport it down the pipeline, mix it with natural gas. This way, we get 100% renewable credit at the landfill, and we don't have the corrosive degradation of the main power equipment that you would have with the, or would you have with the landfill gas today.
And the pipeline is, has it depreciated? Has it sort of lived out its value in the terms of, I mean, obviously, there was a money, cost associated with building it. Are we giving up on something as valuable, or?
Councilmember Sananian, no, I think that the pipeline, there's a couple of issues with the pipeline. One, it's just the fact that you're piping gas over five and a half miles through neighborhoods. So there's that particular issue. The pipeline itself has come under question by the Department of Transportation, because when we installed it in 1992, there was no specific regulation for landfill gas or biogas pipelines. So we built it to a certain standard. It's thermo-welded, high-density polyethylene. So there's some question as to whether we would have to either dig that pipe up or sleeve it in order to protect it as a secondary measure. Again, that's gone into our calculation, and subsequently, our recommendation that we do not use that pipeline to transport gas. Now, I will tell you, there is value in the pipeline, and we're not saying dig it up because we want to turn around and use it as an electrical conduit to push electrical cable throughout the city, that five and a half miles.
Okay. And what we're doing here is directing the city clerk to advertise for bids.
Correct.
For someone to do the inspections, right?
Correct.
So at some point, you're going to come back with whoever wins that bidding process. And we do this every year? Is this?
Councilmember Sananian, we have done this, I believe, in three-year increments. So every, we will give away, or giveaway, we will award a three-year contract, and now, as we get down closer to that decision point, we've decided just two at this point.
Okay. So all the questions that I had, Mr. Mayor? Unless there are more questions, I'll move the item.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sananian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes. What's next, please?
Next is city council and staff comments.
Any comments? Councilmember Devine?
Okay, thank you, thank you. We mentioned the fire open house, that was a fantastic event with a great turnout, absolutely great turnout, a lot of parents with kids. They got to meet up with firemen and touch and jump on the fire trucks. It was just, besides the pancakes, it was great. We also all attended the second, the 22nd Annual Glendale Police Awards Luncheon, and I have to tell you, every year, I'm more and more impressed by our police department, and this year, the citizens were absolutely amazing in the fact that they were rescuing and saving the lives of people that were attacked, or injured, or in danger, and it was, most of the stories were kind of suitable for a TV movie, just unbelievable, and kudos to all of those that got an award that day, because it certainly does, or did, show us the caliber of police officer that we have, and also, the caliber of residents that we have that are willing to put their lives on the line for their fellow residents and citizens. It was, it was really quite amazing. The last item I have is, on May 11th, I attended the Northwest Homeowners Association Coyote Forum, and they have a lot of concerns in that neighborhood, and this seems to be a problem throughout the city, is dealing with the coyote issue. It's kind of like an explosion of coyotes in our, in our city. They had representatives from the Fish and Game, what is that, Fish and Game? That's it, just, okay. And they showed an excellent video and discussed, of course, the, kind of the ways that we can, as individuals, stop coyotes from coming back, coming into our neighborhoods and from hurting us, such as walls, and screens, and spikes, and hazing, and other ways of preventing attacks and coyotes from coming onto your property. Most interesting, though, and the item that raised the most questions, the most anxiety, I think, was the fact that we do have an ordinance about how, if you see someone feeding coyotes, we have an ordinance that can be enacted, and it encompasses something called a citizen's arrest. Officer Rodriguez is here tonight, he was there at that meeting, and of course, when we hear citizen's arrest, that we have to make a citizen's arrest on our neighbors, you know, it kind of raises red flags and our own anxiety. So I would like for Officer Rodriguez to come up and kind of explain to our residents exactly how this ordinance works, how we can prevent our neighbors from feeding coyotes so that we can maybe keep them out of our yards. Officer Rodriguez?
Thank you, Councilman Devine, Councilperson Devine. Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council, city staff, thank you so much. My name's Oscar Rodriguez, I'm lieutenant with the police department, and as Ms. Devine mentioned, I was at that meeting as well, because, you know, coyotes, and it's been a problem in Glendale, many cities throughout Southern California. So the city of Glendale actually in 1995 enacted a city ordinance that essentially says, you cannot feed coyotes. It's a misdemeanor offense, and it was enacted by this council for that very reason, because we had people feeding feral cats, coyotes, and so forth. So the council took that upon themselves and enacted that ordinance in 1995. So it's been on the books all 22 years now. So one of the, one of the persons that was at that meeting said, my neighbor is feeding coyotes, what can I do about it? Is that against the law? So I got up there and I said, yes, it is against the law, very much prohibited by the city ordinance, 6.04.140 of the Glendale Municipal Code prohibits the feeding of coyotes. Along with that, it's also prohibited to leave food out for any animal from 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM in the morning, because it creates problems in the neighborhood. It brings rodents in, rodents brings coyotes in, and the problem just escalates. So because that's a misdemeanor offense, a police officer cannot take it upon himself to make an arrest. Now, I just want to make it clear that we would do everything within our power to try and get these people to talk to each other, to create a, you know, dialogue between neighbors. We would do anything in our power to go out and do visits. In fact, we did a visit today for that very reason. Officer Donnelly went out and visited a neighbor over on Winchester Street who was doing that very thing. So we try and do everything within our power to try and get people to see the reasons why these municipal codes are in place, and try and keep people from creating problems for their neighbors, for themselves, for the entire community. So when a misdemeanor offense is committed, and that's what most municipal codes are, misdemeanor offenses, as a police officer, we cannot make an arrest, or we cannot cite somebody for that offense if we don't observe it ourselves. So then it would take somebody to say, I saw the offense, and I'm willing to be the person who presses charges on that person. So then we would accept the arrest, we would write, most of the time, we'd write a citation, and then we present to the city attorney, and then he decides, or whoever the deputy city attorney handling that case, whether or not they're going to prosecute that offense. So it is prohibited by law. In all the 26 and a half years I've been in Glendale, I don't know of anybody ever being arrested for feeding coyotes, but it is very much against the Glendale Municipal Code.
Have you had any complaints about neighbors, feeding neighbors?
Yes, we do.
Did they have any reports that, and how often that happens?
It doesn't happen very often, but we do have people that set food out mostly for feral cat colonies. Now, the city of Glendale also has an ordinance that requires if you're feeding feral cats, that you be registered with the Pasadena Humane Society as a caregiver for feral cats. So that's also in the Glendale Municipal Code, so that when you register with the Pasadena Humane Society, they educate you on the process of feeding feral cats, and what you have to do to maintain the appropriate feeding schedule and so forth, and how to care for feral cats. So we do have those complaints in Glendale, but most of the time, we could resolve those issues through education, through dialogue, through getting people to understand the reasons why these municipal codes are in place.
Go ahead. Oh, you are. Lieutenant Rodriguez, can you tell us exactly what you did today at the house? What happened with this neighbor?
Well, if you don't mind, let me call Officer Bill Donnelly up, and he can certainly explain everything he did with this person.
Mayor, councilmembers, and staff, made a visit to the house, and...
Which house are you referring to?
It's a complaint that came in via email, and Councilmember Devine was copied on the email, and it gave a particular address in Glendale on Winchester, where a person was allegedly feeding coyotes. So I called Pasadena Humane and arranged for one of their animal control officers to come over, and we met, and we knocked on the door, and I also made a phone call inside, got no response. However, we did see in the driveway a large container of cat food just out in the open, and it was obvious that it had been left out. So the animal control officer, he issued an official warning, warning citation, we left it on the front door, and then we left. Well, about two hours ago, I got a phone call, and it was from the woman, and she apologized. She said I was having issues with my cellphone, it wasn't charging, I got your message, and I called you back right away. She was more than willing to take the food away. She said it was actually for cats and not for coyotes. She said that she used to feed the coyotes years ago, until she came home from work one day and saw a coyote eating one of her cats. So she then decided, well, I can't feed the coyotes anymore because, you know, it's creating this issue. So what she said was, she does feed the cats, but she only puts the food out in the morning. But because of our visit, she's decided, no, I'm not going to do that anymore at all, and there'll be no more food, and so hopefully, we'll do some follow-ups and make sure that she remains in compliance.
You can't shoot at coyotes with a BB gun, can you?
Lieutenant?
It's prohibited.
You know, a town in Wyoming had a bad coyote problem, and they solved it very naturally. They introduced the gray wolves into the neighborhood, and the gray wolves...
Let's not do that.
The gray wolves took care of the coyotes, as the predator, as a natural predator. So I'm not sure if the coyotes have a natural predator, maybe the mountain lion, that's also not a very pleasant alternative, but...
But we did have a representative from the Pasadena Humane Society here about three months ago, two months ago, who explicitly said that you're, you know, throw rocks at them, I mean, they need to, they're predators, they're dangerous, they're wild animals, they should be treated as such, and unless you show them that you're a bigger predator, they kind of forget about that fact.
Right.
And that only builds confidence, overconfidence in them, and they will attack human beings if they have to, smaller humans.
Rarely, rarely does a coyote attacking humans occur. It has occurred in the past, but hazing is the number one best way to deal with coyotes. On the, at the bottom of the website there, we have, there's some links to hazing videos that are on YouTube. The representatives from US Fish and Game showed a very funny video that was produced actually in Aurora, Colorado, but it's very specific as to what you want to do when you see a coyote. If you just walk, see, there's the links up there. If you just walk past coyotes every day, they learn that you're not a threat to them, so they get closer and closer. We did get a report that there was some aggressive coyotes over at Grandview Cemetery. Myself, Sergeant Fernandez, went over there early in the morning, we wanted to see for ourselves, and there was three coyotes bedding down in the center of the cemetery. We got within 50 yards, and they scattered. So, yes, sir.
I just want to make a statement. I lived in Northwest for 22 years. I was on Western Avenue, close to Winchester, and Grandview, and those streets. And in 1994, I guess when we moved there, there was skunks coming. I called the Humane Society, and they came, I put a trap, got the skunk in the trap, and they took the skunk and left it on, behind the Brandt Library Park. And by the time I came back to look and see what's going on, a skunk came back. I mean, before, I mean, the officer were gone, but the skunk was back. Then I learned because of problems I was having with skunk, that coyotes are the only predator to skunk. So don't complain about coyotes, because I went through this for years and years, and when the coyotes became more and more, because in 19, end of 1990s, I don't know, Glendale was doing something, trapping coyotes or something we were doing, so there were very few coyotes, and the skunks were roaming all over Northwest where I was. I had problem for years and years. So to all my neighbors, prior or previous neighbors, don't complain about coyotes, otherwise you're going to have a skunk there.
Be careful what you wish for.
Right.
So, okay, so thank you, Lieutenant Rodriguez, and all of you for following up on this particular homeowner. I know that the people that were there talked about how their dogs had been attacked and killed, and, I mean, it's really a problem there, so in that area, and I know across the, throughout the city. So thank you very much for explaining that citizen's arrest. So I have two asks. One is that we revise our PSAs, and I know that this is on, is the video from the Fish and Game on our website? Is that the video that's below? Lieutenant Rodriguez, is that the video that's below? The one that we saw?
Yes.
At the park, Brandt Park? Okay, it is.
Before you leave, we may have one more question, if you don't mind.
Yes, so I would like to have that video shown on GTV6 if possible, or maybe our PSAs revised, so that that information on hazing, it's excellent, it's really very good, teaches people how to keep the coyotes away. Have that integrated and brought to GTV6. Also included a step-by-step explanation of the citizen's arrest, so that our residents know what they can do if they cite someone who is illegally feeding coyotes. And it was also suggested at this meeting, and I'll leave this up to staff, to put into the electric bills. You know, we have this, I know these won't fit there, but the city has this fabulous flyer, Your Guide to Avoiding Coyote Contact, and it's excellent. But if they can put something in an electric bill, maybe once, for people to read about the ordinance, about the procedures, I think that would be very helpful. Because I think awareness, and like Lieutenant said, education is very important, and I think if we want to at least put a dent in this problem, that that's the way to go. So thank you so much for being here. I know it wasn't easy. I know you had other issues, but thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I do have a question regarding the citizen's arrest.
Yes.
It was indicated that the neighbor called and said that such an address, the neighbor is feeding the coyotes or the cats. Can you make a citizen's arrest anonymously, or your neighbor would know you called on him?
No, it can't be anonymous, because somebody, you have the right to confront your accuser, so whoever is accusing you of committing that offense has the right to confront you in court. So we couldn't keep you anonymous. But you could call us with anonymous tip, and we could follow that up, we just couldn't make an arrest anonymously. We couldn't do that.
Yeah, I mean, I would suggest that our residents don't engage in any of these citizen's arrests. I know you brought that up, but I'd stay away from it because that's just begging for problems. Call the police, we have a very competent police department, they know what they're doing, they'll take care of it, whether it's anonymously or directly, openly, but don't try to arrest your neighbor for feeding animals.
Well, it's not, it's not really an arrest, it's just calling the police, and the police come out, that's it.
No, but there is a concept called citizen's arrest, that's a different concept, totally different. So calling the police is calling the police. So, calling the police is calling the police. Making citizen's arrest is making citizen's arrest. I'm just saying, stay away from making citizen's arrest.
So, in this case, it was not a citizen's arrest?
It was not.
Somebody called the police.
Because your neighbor may decide to arrest you right back.
Well, the warning, the first step that he took, I think, is the way to go, the warning right there.
And that's what we would normally do, is try and take the least amount of enforcement action to try and get people to comply voluntarily.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more comments?
No.
Anyone else?
Okay, I have a couple of, thank you.
Thank you very much.
As was indicated, the fire department event was a success. I was at the same meeting, the coyote meeting. The hazing videos are out of this world, they were really funny, and they teach you how to stand tall and scare the coyotes. We do have City of Glendale's City Hall 75th Anniversary Celebration this Saturday, June 3rd, from 1:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m. I encourage everyone to participate. This will be a good event. We have, you know, live 1940s-era entertainment in a small parking lot adjacent to Isabel Street. So, 1-2-3, Saturday, June 3rd, City Hall 75th Anniversary Celebration. Also, Glendale Latino Association has a scholarship award breakfast this Thursday, May 18th, from 7:30 at Oakmont Country Club. These are my comments and announcements, and if you have anything else, what is next? I'm sorry?
I believe the same day as the City Hall Open House is also Police Department Open House. So, two for one, if you come on down.
Okay, there you go. Two for one. What's next, please?
Community event announcements, three minutes.
Okay, I have Matt Ganji.
Hi, I'm Matt Ganji, and I'm the president of Glendale Beautiful, and I have Roberta Medford.
Board member and moral support.
Yeah, moral and emotional support.
Casa committee.
Former president. She's doing some great work, getting the word out about Awards Day right now as well. And so, yeah, I wanted to invite the council and city staff, everyone watching on TV, everybody here, to Awards Day. It's this Thursday, in a couple days, May 18th, and it's at 3:00 p.m. It's at Joe Bridges Community Clubhouse, which is in Glen Oaks Park, and the address is 2531 East Glen Oaks Boulevard, 91206. And we're going to have some coffee and some refreshments. It's going to be a great event, and we're awarding properties that have done sustainable landscaping. Sustainability is beautiful by its very nature, so, properties that are multifamily and commercial are being awarded that have done eco-friendly landscaping. And there's some great awardees. Azera Apartments, they're landscaping. The Salem Lutheran Church and School landscaping. Wingstop and Leslie's Pool Supply landscaping. The Pretty Nails Building landscaping. And our special award is to the City of Glendale for the Palmer Park renovations. So, we hope you all can be there, and it's going to be a great event to award people in our community that are doing great landscaping work, so.
And they're very beautiful properties, and what I like is the diversity of the types of businesses, that beauty can be at a nail shop and at a hot wings place. So, please join us on Thursday.
And it says from 3 to 4?
It probably lasted about an hour or so.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
And they all are mayor, they are on May 18th.
Yes, we have several events on that day, but we'll try to make them all make around. Ms. Bismeyer?
Good evening, Mayor Guerapetian and members of the city council. As you know, my name is Verlinda Bismeyer, and I'm a 40-year resident of Glendale. And this is My Pet Project, which is the Glendale Youth Orchestra. This is the last concert of our season. We do three per year, and so, we have been a viable orchestra for 28 years. And so, we have a magnificent program this coming Sunday, which is a very busy Sunday for all of Glendale, so many things going on. But at the same time, ours is the last event of the evening. And so, I just try to encourage the people of Glendale to come and watch and hear these gorgeous children and the music that we play. And that you can check online with Facebook or glendaleyouthorchestra.com, and just to hear snippets of what the kids are playing. And I hated to say that last week, I had put in my paperwork, but unfortunately, it was 27 megabytes, and the maximum is 25. And that's why you did not see my poster. So, I just have to let you know about that. So, I encourage everyone to come, and, you know, as I always say, please park at the Orange Street Garage. You get a validation for a dollar, because concert always goes over $2, I mean, two hours. And so, but the kids, oh, you just have to hear this Gershwin rendition. It is just remarkable. I mean, I just love the kids. But thank you very much, and I'm hoping that you can all come or give references to other people, and I'll be watching Channel 99. Thank you.
Ms. Bismeyer, do you have the flyer in electronic format?
Yeah, it's on the...
Where can we get a copy?
Oh, but you can go online, glendaleyouthorchestra.com, and you can pick it up. And they were supposed to be able to play some of the music. As I said, it was too large, you know, a megabyte thing, I don't know anything about that, so that you could listen to some of the things that the kids have played. But if you go on G Y O dot com, you can pick up some of the information just to hear them. Okay?
Very well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. What's next, please?
Next, there were new...
Number seven.
Next on the agenda is adoption of ordinances, 7A. Oh, there's three actually.
These are for public comments. Oh, I'm sorry, I have more, before you go there.
Yeah, three-minute general public comment.
Yes, oh, these are, okay, this is the difference between the color of these cards. Okay. Rem Darvignon.
Good evening, Mayor, and staff, and council members. My name is Rem Darvignon. I, last several years, I worked in Glendale. Now, I'm a business owner, I own a business in Glendale. And I want to talk about the planning to open the marijuana shops, the stores in Glendale. I think that is not a good idea, because it's going to affect the businesses that's going next to the stores. And in general, it may affect the businesses and opportunity to grow the different kind of small and big businesses in Glendale. I was thinking about, like, criminal activity next to that kind of stores, even though I had just done a lot of research trying to find out if there's any criminal activities next to that stores. I couldn't find any, like, evidences that can happen. But I printed out some maps of the stores, and where they are located, and the criminal maps, and what's the, like, criminal activity next to that stores. And it shows that there's some activities next to, there's the Glendale, there's three stores, dispensaries right now in the neighborhood next to Glendale. And there's, like, not a direct, maybe indirect, activities, criminal activities in that region. And I don't want to say that all the marijuana users can, like criminals, but some criminals are the marijuana users, and they're going to visit the stores, which can affect all the neighborhood activities and the other stuff. And also, I don't want to say that the money that the city collects from the taxes, I don't think that's going to, enough to cover all the costs that comes with that, which including the police and the health issues that can affect on young adults. Because as we can see in Colorado, there is, like, high increase of marijuana use in the young adults, which affects, in the long term, it affects in general in health and the city environment in general. That's pretty much all. If there's any questions. I just, I want to say, like, in short term, it may bring some money in the city, but in the long term, I want to see, I want to see, like, Glendale as a center city of, like, a dual city without any other things that can affect the quality of life of the Glendale citizens.
Okay, thank you. So, our current ordinance is in effect at this time, right? No sales, no cultivation, not deliveries, but no sales, no cultivation at this time?
That's correct. Our prohibition remains intact at this time.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker.
Personal cultivation.
Retail sales.
Retail cultivation, right. Next speaker is Kimberly Cornell.
I'm very, very nervous.
Oh, don't be nervous.
And I prepared the paper, you please read, okay? Because I talk when too fast, and I have an accent, and I don't want to confuse you. I got this citation for the garage, not my home, the rental property, this community service, his name is Shant, he had argument with me, then he hung me up, and I got this citation. And I don't want to disobey the law, but I have a situation, because since I lost my husband, I didn't even, I couldn't even live in Glendale. I went to Washington, D.C., lived with my son for the last two and a half years. And I, when the time my husband passed away, I buried him on Friday. The next Tuesday, he told me he had to go back to work. I grabbed him, and I called 911. The police came, said you are yelling on the street, said you don't want to live anymore. We have to send you to hospital. So, all these years, I, because of my faith, I'm a Christian, I know the Lord wants me to be here, otherwise, I do not know how long I can carry. I didn't mean to fight with the city. Please, let my tenants to finish the term right when I have a vacancy. I do, but now, I worry also about the ceiling. There are two bedrooms above the garage, the building dead. I have a photo to prove, they even have a window on the side. So, please, give me time, let my tenants to move out. I needed the income. I don't want to upset them. They move out, I have a mortgage payment, and I...
Can I ask you, may I ask you a couple of quick questions? So, you have a unit above your garage? Is there a two-bedroom above your garage?
Yeah.
Okay. And you know that we have an ordinance right now, we have a new law that will allow you to keep your unit, and allows you to legalize your unit, to make it a legal unit. So, there is a law in place right now, am I correct, Mr. Sochaud, that you can legalize your unit that was illegal before?
There is a means, by way of the accessory dwelling units, to legalize units. I don't know that in the context of this ongoing code enforcement case, that, certainly not as we sit here tonight, that that's necessarily applicable here, because this one dates back a little ways. What we would like to do is have one of our folks in the city attorney's office meet with Ms. Cornell, if she would take the meeting, and we could try to find a way forward. That probably is the best thing to do.
So, Ms. Cornell, last time I saw you was at Gary's funeral, so...
Thank you.
He was a good public, you know, he was a good public servant. He loved Glendale. Yeah, it's good to see you.
He was a commissioner.
He was fellow commissioner on the Parks Commission.
My son saw Mr. Najarian in D.C., and he told me, he said, I saw Ara. And I said, what did he say? He said, your father is, was a nice man. Thank you.
So, to the extent that this ADU ordinance allows Ms. Cornell to, I mean, let's have the city attorney look at this and try to find ways to accommodate.
The city clerk has your information, the city attorney will contact you, set up an appointment to see how can we address this issue.
And I have a citation to pay, but I'm not home is because I have a missionary trip to China. I want to be back until June 10th, so please, help me, right, with this citation also.
They will contact you and see how can they address this issue.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Robert Hogg.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council staff. Thank you for a few minutes to talk to you. I'm here to give you, from your website, it says that 2017, you'll be considering public feedback in regards to Prop 64 and possible implementation of marijuana shops and various tactical things that the city is going to do or not do. My feedback to you is, I strongly recommend banning and not allowing marijuana and pot shops to give publicly available product to specifically teenagers, kids, anybody under 21. I started a robotics team about 15 years ago. I'm an engineer at JPL up the hill, so of course, my comments don't reflect NASA or JPL in any way, my own. Through the team, I have worked with hundreds of students now, so I have, without going into many, many details, a lot of subjective examples of how easy access to marijuana can be really detrimental to their productivity and ability to have a happy life moving forward, even years after they've had a lot of marijuana use. I worked on the next Mars robot, so I thought I'd give you a different perspective than maybe what you've heard so far. When we send something to another planet that's so far away, we're very risk averse. And I remember when Prop 64 was up for passing or not passing, one of the big selling points was financial stimulation for the community and this community. And so, I would submit the following idea to you, that we don't yet know how risky it is to allow the proliferation of marijuana in this, in our society here. There's just not enough information to make that judgment call. So, if we allow pot shops to open and other such implementation, it's going to be hard to backtrack after you've opened up that Pandora's box. This morning, I was driving to work, and I couldn't believe this, I was thinking about what I would say to you in my three minutes with 36 seconds left. A news report came up, and I tracked it down. And so, this is actually objective, I'll give you something objective here. I think the rest of what I said was subjective. On sciencedaily.com and many other news outlets, you can read, the headline is, "Emergency Room Visits Related to Marijuana Use at a Colorado Hospital Quadrupled After Legalization." This is a scientific paper. I believe in science very strongly. And then, the first paragraph of that paper is, "Visits by Teens to a Colorado Children's Hospital Emergency Department and Its Satellite Urgent Care Centers Increase Rapidly After Legalization of Marijuana for Commercial, Medical, and Recreational Use," according to new research. My time is up. I've never been to a council meeting. Thank you so much for all you've done. I've been here for several years. And preemptively, thank you for everything you'll do to continue to make this place an amazing place to live in and work in.
Thanks for coming. Thank you.
What's next, please?
7A Adoption of Ordinances. Ordinance, changing zoning classification on the southern portion of the site from R 250 to C 31, and changing zoning classification on the southeastern portion of the site to include precise plan of design overlay and amending zoning map in association with PZC 1608, 165, and PZC 162, 0159311, South Adams Street, 1012 through 1028 East Colorado Street. This was introduced by Councilmember Najarian on May 9, 2017.
I'll move the item, Mr. Mayor.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Zagajanian.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Sananian.
Yes.
Next item, please.
Eight action items. Ada is Director of Community Service. Eight action items, 8A is Director of Community Services and Parks regarding Cerritos Elementary School Multipurpose Field Project. 8A1, it's motion authorizing to enter into a professional services agreement with Placeworks Inc. in an amount not to exceed $127,093 plus 10% contingency, $12,709.30 to provide California Environmental Quality Act services for the Cerritos Elementary School Multipurpose Field Project.
Mr. Bolanikian.
Thank you, Mayor Garpetian, members of the commission, good evening. Back in March of 2016, as we mentioned earlier today during our budget study session, City Council approved a $16 million DIF strategic plan. And one of those projects in the plan was to research the idea of joint use projects with Glendale Unified. So we presented two projects, one being the Wilson Multipurpose Field, Multipurpose Field Project, and another one being Cerritos Elementary Joint Use Multipurpose Field Project. So what we're proposing is a U-12 artificial turf soccer field with sports lighting, a jogging track, security fencing, replacing or expanding the men's and women's restroom at Cerritos Park and a storage area for our grooming equipment. And we would be using the existing parking lot at Cerritos Elementary and at the park itself. Here's a rendering of the proposed project. We will be repurposing some of the sport amenities that the school currently has, putting the volleyball courts together, the handball courts together, and the basketball courts together so we can fit in at least a U-12 field with a jogging track. The proposed city programming would be Monday through Friday between 4:00 and 5:00. We'll have it open to the public for drop-in programming and for our One Glendale After-School Sports Program. Between 5:00 and 10:00, we'll have it open to our youth leagues and our adult leagues. And then for Saturdays and Sundays, 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM for, once again, our adult and youth leagues. The proposed schedule is, we're hoping the EIR will take between six and, I'm sorry, nine to 12 months, starting June of this year till May of 2018. Planning and design 12 months, bidding and construction award three to six months, and our construction six months. Project completion, fall goes well, by March 2020. And we're recommending, we're, staff is recommending that City Council approve the PSA Public Professional Services Agreement with Placeworks in the amount of $127,000 to conduct the EIR. We had eight, we sent the EIR to, the proposals to eight consultants, two did respond, and Placeworks, staff feels that Placeworks was the best qualified firm to conduct the EIR because they have experience working on school projects.
Any questions?
I have two questions.
Sure.
You know, I know that schools, schools don't have a whole lot of money, but we're not sharing any of the cost of this with the school district. We're paying for...
We're paying for everything. They're providing us with the land and we're providing everything.
Okay. And will we be renting these facilities to the adult leagues and the youth leagues?
We will be going to the parks once when the, before the facility is completed, we will go to the Parks Commission and incorporate fees in our citywide fee schedule. It'll be similar to fees that we have at Pacific. Since it's in South Glendale, we don't want to have, we don't want the fees to be more expensive than Pacific. It'll probably be the same. We currently have the nonprofit rate, standard rate, commercial rate, and we have an approved youth group rate. They're fairly, they're fairly cheap. They're fairly, they're fair.
Thank you.
Counselor.
I'm sorry, Mr. Bolanikian, that property, city paid for it. It does not belong, I mean, now it belongs to the school, but that property has been purchased by the city in 2005.
The school itself or the park?
No, no. Where that playground is?
Yes, that's city facility, but we're gonna be constructing...
A little bit earlier, you said that when Councilmember Devine was asking whether they're gonna pay some money to us, to the city, you said that property belongs to school?
Yes, because we'll be constructing the field on the school property.
What I'm saying, that property now belongs to the school, but city bought that property and gave it to the school. That's what I'm trying to say. In 2005, you can go and look at the records, city paid for it and then transferred for the multipurpose use to a school that we have to use it and they have to use it. It's not that they provide us the land.
True, but I think Mr. Bolanikian's point is that because today it belongs to the school, even though they, regardless of the transaction that brought that property to GUSD, they could theoretically charge us for the use of that school site, but in fact, they're not. Their idea is they're gonna allow a use of that school that we don't have access to today and through DIF funding, we'll do the improvements. And so we kind of collaborate together. I understand what you're saying in terms of the city buying that property and transferring it to the school district, but at this point, it is the school district's property.
I think, but the idea at the time was that this will be multipurpose use between city and the school. It was not just like they gave up on the property.
I think that, we can certainly go back and do a little more research. I think that is the creation of Cerritos Park to the south of the, of the boundary line and the creation of the school north of the boundary line. And so what we're saying is what we'd like to do is build on that area that's north of that boundary line on the school property.
And also, are you certain it wasn't redevelopment money with which that law was purchased? It could have been redevelopment money. I mean, I don't know. It was, right?
I think so.
It was portion of it, because I've been involved with that, I know. A portion of the lot belonged to Forest Lawn that they gave it to us, portion which is, starts from Glendale Avenue until the middle of that park. And the balance of it, city purchased the property and as I said, I remember vividly, the whole purpose was that the joint project was not just gave it to the city, to the school district, but you can check, of course.
Okay, any more comments on this?
I'll just say, in the, in the long history of city having used mostly redevelopment monies to purchase properties and actually turn it over to for-profit businesses, giving it to a school is not the worst purpose that I could think of. So if, even if it turns out that we actually bought property with our own money and turned it over to our own school district, I don't know, worse things could happen.
I was not against it, what we are doing, but I just want to clarify that what was the story of that land and adjacent land which Forest Lawn gifted to the city.
Thank you, Mr. Agarjainian. I, if you go back one, one slide, I have a question on the, right here, on the...
Yes.
On the timing of this thing. I mean, planning and design 12 months? It's, we want to get these things done in our lifetime. Let me put it that way. This, this project's dragged on and I understand it's not you, it's just, we want, construction is six months. How could the planning be 12 months? I mean, it's...
Part of the problem is that you have to deal with the state architect because it's on school property, so you'll have to go through our process, plus you'll have to go through the process that runs through Sacramento because it's on school property. So if this were a, just a city standalone project, it would go a bit faster than this in terms of the, the planning and design.
Well, my suggestion is maybe we can, we can collaborate this with the, with the GUSD because they are building multi, tens of millions of dollars of projects and it's not taking three years to build a soccer field. All their projects are going through like, like wildfire. So that, that second item, the 12 months, I have a huge issue with that. And bidding and construction is fine, but the first two items, 12 months for an EIR, I don't know what the numbers are, but just because this is a city project, it's maybe it's taking a longer time. But if you tell them 12 months, they're gonna come back in 16 months. So these numbers, if we can shorten these, I think that's the thing that I will be looking for. Other than that, I'm okay with it.
Yeah, we're, Mayor Garpetian, members of the council, in terms of meeting with GUSD, we're meeting with staff onsite at Wilson Middle School next week for a site visit and to start the EIR there. So we're constantly speaking with facilities, facilities and support in their planning department section.
Okay.
So I believe this is a fair schedule. We are being a little liberal, not conservative, but our goal is to work closely with DSA, which is the State Architecture Group, and GUSD and our staff to expedite, you know, the project and get it completed.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion?
Move the item.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Agarjainian.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Sananian.
Yes.
Mary Garpetian.
Yes, next slide, please.
He is Director of Community Services and Parks regarding Verdugo Park All-Inclusive Playground Project. He won his motion approving a grant and license agreement with Shane's Inspiration in the amount of $15,000 for design outreach and consulting services for the Verdugo Park All-Inclusive Playground Project.
Okay, Mayor Garpetian, members of the council, we have our, we're gonna start working with our second all-inclusive playground project at Verdugo Park. A few months ago, actually back in September, council approved the Maple Park All-Inclusive Playground. So now the second location would be the north end of Verdugo, which is also part of the DIF strategic plan. And the budget for this is $825,000, similar to Maple Park. The universally accessible playgrounds allow children of all abilities to play together. It's intergenerational as we see, you know, grandparents walking their grandkids to the playground. It'll be made available to them, also give them, give grandparents also access state-of-the-art, sensory-rich environment. And also the children will learn communication and acceptance and trust in compassion amongst one another. The site would be located right at the orange dot at the north end. We currently have a playground there. That playground was installed, I believe, about five or six years ago. We have 6,000 square foot space. We're gonna expand it between 12 to 12,000 square feet. We'll be meeting, June 17th, we'll be having a community meeting. That'll be on the next slide for, when we talk about the timeline. But we will be having a community meeting with Shane's Inspiration and our planning consultant, David Volz, to talk about other amenities that we would like to include in the park. But we would like to continue to have the Shane's Inspiration Playground at the north end of the park to activate that area a bit more. History of Shane's Inspiration, the first accessible playground was installed in 2000 at Griffith Park. There's currently 56 all-inclusive playgrounds and 75 in development. We, Shane's Inspiration provides play for 35,000 children in 150 schools and they are committed to creation of inclusive, sensory-rich development and funds save challenging for everyone, for kids of all abilities. The services Shane's Inspiration will provide is community outreach, fundraising, the conceptual design, so design development. They will coordinate with our landscape architect and our planning consultant for construction documents. They would work with Little Tykes and Landscape Structures. Those are the two companies that we'll be using for Maple Park. And they'll also be helping recreation staff in terms of programming. We have two here, up here, one at Griffith Park and one in Calabasas. The one that we're proposing at Maple Park would look similar to Griffith Park. We do have a conceptual plan ready, or look like castles. So it looks pretty neat. We'll come to commission within the next couple of months for the final drawings. The playground programming will work with recreation staff, recreation section. As part of our strategic goals for 1718 is to develop all-inclusive recreation programming once when Maple All-Inclusive is completed. So we'll do exactly the same at Verdugo. Once a month or twice a month, on a Saturday, we'll have, you know, Verdugo Park buddies or some type of, we have to have a name for the program, we'll have programming for children of all abilities. We'll work with the nonprofits in the area, let it be Tobin World, Glendale Unified, Modern Support Services to provide, so they can enjoy that programming also. Our proposed schedule, like I mentioned earlier, we'll have our community meeting June 17th. That will be at the north end of Verdugo Park between 9:00 AM to 11:00. Flyers, the postcards will follow. We're gonna be sending those out within the next week. Planning and design will take about 12 months, bidding and contract award three to six months, and construction about a year. And the construction, the schedule is a little bit longer because we would like to combine it with Verdugo Park, the entire rehabilitation, which also will include the community building, some ADA path of travel, parking, benches, and some picnic areas. Any questions on this? So we're requesting council approve a professional services agreement in the amount of $15,000 so we can start working with Shane's Inspiration on the development of the Verdugo Park.
So a couple of questions. I want to make sure that we don't lose any trees in the park. I hope it fits on the footprint of the existing park. Secondly, what, so this is a licensed playground. Can't we just create our own all-inclusive playground? Do we have to go through the Shane's Inspiration folks? And what do they do for us that we can't do with our fine parks and recreation staff?
They're doing the design development of all-inclusive. They're basically our consultants. And they're also gonna fundraise for us because we have an $825,000 budget. Looking at Verdugo and the size, we want it bigger than Maple Park. We're hoping to fundraise or them help us fundraise another $150,000 to $200,000.
So we're kicking in $125,000 and they're gonna help raise $150,000?
$825,000.
I'm sorry?
We're kicking in $825,000.
$825,000. And they're gonna kick in an extra $100,000?
Yes, $150,000 to $200,000.
So it's a million-dollar playground?
Yes.
The more amenities we have?
Getting expensive.
Yeah, it's the amenities. If we want us...
And how much, what's the fee for our consultant, total fee? Is it just $15,000?
It's $15,000 up until 30 to 40% of the documents. And then we're gonna hire another consultant, I would probably say between 20 to 25,000.
Okay. Any questions?
No, I just have a few comments. First of all, I'm, I'm really excited about this and I, I know it's expensive, but it's going to serve a lot of children. It's going to do a lot of good. Is there, isn't there an educational component to this as well?
Yes, we're gonna reach out to Glendale Unified and the nonprofit and the preschools and all the schools in the area. We'll schedule field trips with them. That's another reason why we want to expand the path of travel at both Verdugo and at Maple Park so it's accessible to everyone with all abilities. So that's where the recreation programming comes in. We'll have recreation staff.
I, I hear nothing but positive in the community when I mention that this is what's coming to Glendale. If, I think if you look at the pictures, the photos that he has, you can see the intricacy and the design that goes into this and it's really, really quite remarkable. And I think the children will, will really love it and appreciate it. And of course, the lessons that they learn at this park are, you know, there, can't put a cost on that or a value on that.
Councilmember Agarjainian.
This is accessible to also disabled children, right?
Yes, this is all disabled. It'll be wheelchair accessible, yes, accessible to everyone.
Is there gonna be a fence around it?
No, there won't be a fence around it.
Do we, I mean, that looks like a cute, that castle looks cute, but I know we have some homeless folks in Verdugo Park. I don't want that to be their new condo. So is that something we can watch out for? No, I'm serious. I mean, there's folks, there are homeless people and I'm sure that would be the, if I was homeless, that'd be the first place I'd go for, a nice covered castle and, you know, swing and all that other stuff.
We make sure that there's a drive path through all of our parks. For example, like on Fremont, one of the, the expense items that's there is to allow a drive path for GPD vehicles to drive through the park, particularly at night, to make sure that we don't have any kind of attractive nuisances in the parks up to and including vagrancy.
And in terms of, I don't want to get down in the... And in terms of, I don't want to get down in the weeds, but sometimes some of the homeless folks use slides as frying pans. They build a fire at the, at the end of the, I've represented some people like that, actually, who build a fire at the end of the slide and they cook their steaks on there and their food. There's, I hope that we sort of, I'm really concerned about this park. It's an expensive park. That we really do our best to make sure there's not any intentional vandalism or inadvertent vandalism through improper use. So, I mean, we have to take care of this. This has to last us for a long time. I think we all agree and serve as many children of all abilities as long as possible. So let's think of the design in such a way that we can protect it and maintain it as best as possible.
For the playgrounds, we'll be using rubberized material on the floor. We won't have sand or fiber. So that will hopefully help out with the fire.
Mr. Najarian, why are they using the slide to barbecue again?
So, so on a metal slide, picture a metal slide. As it comes down at the end, it's a flat skillet. So they build a fire underneath and cook their food on there.
Use it as a pan, basically?
Like a pan, a frying pan or a skillet.
Now, you've just given a lot of people an idea of where to have a barbecue.
I don't think the homeless are watching GTV6, but...
Our slides are plastic.
But my point is that whatever the possibility for abuse is, let's really, I mean, this is obviously a focus of our Verdugo Park and for our all-inclusive amenities. Let's really try and make it as, take care of it as long as we can.
I have, I have a couple of questions. So you said there is one in Griffith Park, one in Calabasas?
Yes, there's one Griffith Park and one in Calabasas. The one in Calabasas, I myself, I take my kids there once a month and participate in one of their programs. And that's what we're hoping to mirror here in Glendale.
Okay, so LA has a large population, like two or three million, and they have only one of these parks?
No, LA has a number. I believe they have close to 20 all-inclusive playgrounds.
Okay. To be honest with you, I don't know if this is the right location for it or not. And I tell you why. Because this is a passive park. This is not, during the week, not many people there. I just want to make sure that, like Maple Park is an active park. And my understanding was that we're going to do one of these and see how would that work? And then take from there and build a second one so we will learn from our design issues and build the second one in a, in a better design or what have you. But, so this is larger than the one in Maple Park? Or this is the same?
Depending on size. Right now, well, we don't...
Because 12,000 square feet...
Size-wise, Maple Park is around 10,000. That's what we're estimating.
So it's not that big of a difference. It's like 2,000 square feet larger area here.
Depending on how much money we raise, we fundraise, that's how big the playground is going to be.
I think, I don't know. I, the idea is a great idea. We all want to serve our children. But I, I'm not sure that this location of Verdugo Park is the right location because we have another playground over there as well and it's fairly new. And putting another million dollar, million two, because million dollar is just the equipment. It's not the rest of the things that comes with it. And I think this was, this could have been a great project with some of the, with the GUSD in some of the schools that they have for special needs children. And they could use that every day on daily basis. I don't know if they can bring their kids, the students, here every day or not. And Shane's, the company, is it a for-profit or a nonprofit?
Nonprofit organization.
It's a nonprofit, okay. And they have programs and educational programs that comes with the...
Yes, we'll be working with their staff in terms of programming. They'll work, for example, last year I went to the Griffith Park one and Disney was there providing programs for the kids. So that's what we're hoping to bring to Glendale.
Have we done our research as to, this is the best second location for this equipment?
Yes, we have. That was part of the DIF and plus with the new community building that we would like to build. We would like to tear down the current restrooms there that the day camp uses and have a community building, something a little bit smaller than what we have at Griffith Manor that'll, if we have that building there with the restrooms, and it'll be a nice little area for people to hang out at the community building if we program it and then walk out and play at the playground.
I think the other idea here was that we have one in the south and one in the north to serve Montrose, far north, and then the rest of the northern area. So we have one on each side, either side of town of the city.
Well, if that's the case, you could have had one in northwest Glendale as well. I mean, no, I, I just want to make sure because this park is not an active park. I just want to emphasize on that because this is a large dollar amount. And we want to make sure that if we build it, it would be, it would be used, it would be programmed the right way so it's heavily used. That's, that's our goal, basically.
Don't you, don't you have programs in the summer? I see kids there all the time in the summer.
Yes, we have our summer day camp program. We have 75 kids there a week for nine weeks. Next year it's going to be 10. We have our summer concert series. We have special events at that facility. So the, plus with the new building, we're going to be activating with rentals and programs, contract classes, so that all feed into the playground.
No, I understand, but your 10-week programs are not for, to use this playground. The 10-week programs are the summer camps that, you know, my kids went to that camp and they still do and they love it. Has, they have dance classes, they have plays that ensue aside. And it's not just to come, that eight or 10 weeks, not everybody's coming to use this playground. So it would be part of it. But what I'm, again, I'm emphasizing on this because I want to make sure during the week, you don't see any children, even the playground is empty, not very often on weekdays. Weekends, yes, it's being used. But overall, this is a passive park. It's not a park that has a lot of children coming into play. So I want to make sure that we would program it right so it will be heavily used because that's, that's the goal.
Once when they see the playground, there'll be a lot of kids enjoying that facility.
So wouldn't the southern park site be a better location because it has better access, wheelchair access, parking access? This one up here at the north end is kind of isolated. There's not much, all you have is street parking. The southern site has all that parking right there and it's a much shorter walk to it. You've got a bathroom there, you've got the skate park there, you've got the pavilion and the tables and the cooking areas and the barbecues and all that. Wouldn't the south, the south location be better?
That playground is fairly, fairly new and it's a smaller area. Since we need at least 10,000 to 12,000 square feet, that's why we had decided to go up north to north, to the north end. And plus it would be a good addition with the community room.
Are you going to build new parking lots inside?
Not a new parking lot. We're going to build some parking spaces, ADA parking spaces and handicap parking spaces.
Where are those going to be located?
North of the bathrooms, north of the community building.
So how far away is it going to be from that parking lot to this playground?
Not, not far at all.
Are you going to take away grass area to build parking spaces?
Some, not a lot.
I don't like that. I mean...
That's what I'm saying, I think...
I don't like taking grass away to put ADA parking unless you could find another. We've got that city, well, no, that's even further down.
Then from there on, you have to build a handicap accessible ramp.
Redesign this? Has this been designed yet?
No, we're working...
I volunteered to...
June 17th?
Mr. Ochoa is...
Well, I would, I would tell you that...
I mean, it's a concern. Let me just summarize.
No, and I appreciate the concern, certainly. But to the extent that, that much of the same elements of this council gave us direction previously on the DIF to move forward with this project in, in a park, at the north end of this park has been historically a little more passive. But the park itself, both from the skate park to the existing playground area to the, not just summer day camps, but also the holiday day camps that we run through. And you go through the weekends, I grant you that maybe during the week there isn't as much activity, but on the weekends, boy, there is a ton of activity at this park. So based on what council has told us before and based on what we have now, I think we can move forward unless you want to change policy, change direction. But at this point, we will go forward with the design review if you approve this license agreement. And rest assured, as we come back, you will have the opportunity to give your, you know, kind of fine-tuning adjustments to, to the vision that the designers come up with, similar to what we do with all of our parks.
So if it comes like at that stage and we don't like the way that you've taken a lot of green area out to put parking lots, and it's not just a parking lot, you have to build a ramp, an ADA accessible ramp, compliant ramp from the parking lot. And it cannot be only one. What if they want to, you know, use a wheelchair and access this playground from the street? How are they going to, because then you have, you're going to have too many ramps coming in from different directions. And again, we are all, I'm all for the, for the project. It's a, it's a noble thing to do, but it has to be the right location. And I still am not really sold on the, on the location in this, in this park.
So I think what the answer here is that we wait for the design and then we can comment on the design and if it's not, I mean, I would think that you're going to be taking all of these...
Mayor Garpetian, members of the council, this is only a conceptual design for the playground itself. We'll be holding a meeting June 17th for the actual master planning of the entire park. That'll be a community meeting. So after the community tells us what they want, they'll, our designer will come back with three different plans and then we get to choose from the three conceptual plans.
It's conceivable. It's similar to what we saw at Columbus School. When we were looking at a multi-use field, the council had approved the notion of a multi-use field at Columbus. We went to the community meeting at Columbus and residents went nuts and said, you know, don't you dare, or at least some residents, maybe three or four of them, said, don't you dare put a field there. And then we pivoted and moved that, that field to Cerritos. So to the extent that if we are going to work with the brand, that is the non, the nonprofit Shane's Inspiration, you can move forward with this $15,000 agreement as the licensing agreement. We'll go forward with the community outreach that we're planning to do. And if the community says we don't want it there, or if there are just so many obstacles that would preclude it from going there, then we would come back to you, just as we did with the multi-use fields, and say, council, that's the wrong place for it. We should go someplace else and ultimately find the path of least resistance that meets the best need.
And the other thing is that the outreach that you're going to do, we need to know what is the percentage of the people who live in the area that are going to use such a playground? Because we do have almost a brand-new playground in that, in that, in that park. So it's, it's not the one that it's really dilapidating or falling apart. So building another one for, you know, with this kind of a price tag, I think that's what I'm, I'm concerned to, to make sure that this is the right location for it. So if you bring the conceptual plan back and we don't like the way it's designed or we don't like the location, at that time, our risk is $15,000. It's not a contract that is binding that we have to build that, that playground in this location. It could be somewhere else.
Yeah, this, this contract is for the second location for the all-inclusive playground. So if we decided to move it to another park, we'll still be working with Shane's Inspiration. We'll just give them a different layout.
Maybe in Babe Herman, right across the street? I don't know, I'm just kidding. Okay, is there a motion?
I'll move the item. I would move the item.
I'm sorry, you have anything to add, Mr.? Okay, just one. One more comment? Yes, second.
Pro call, please.
Member Zagajanian?
Yes.
Sivai?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sananian?
Yes.
Yes. What's next, please?
See a city manager regarding state legislative advocacy service. C1 is motion authorizing to execute, enter into a professional services agreement with Emmanuel Jones and Associates for a three-year contract term with two additional one-year options to renew.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor Garpetian, members of council. Christine Powers with the city manager's office. So the city of Glendale started working with Emmanuel Jones and Associates back in 2013. The city engaged in an extensive RFP process. And Emmanuel Jones was selected for a number of reasons, which included their competency as a firm, their ability to split areas of focus among their in-house lobbyists, and their comprehensive knowledge of Glendale's local issues and needs. They actually represented the Glendale, city of Glendale in the late 90s and early 2000s. And they also currently represent the cities of Burbank and Pasadena. So they're aware of Glendale's history and they know the regional needs well as well. So over the past five years, Emmanuel Jones has been advocating on behalf of Glendale for issues that directly and indirectly impact our ability to do business here locally, to help us avoid undue fiscal impacts, to help us secure revenues, and also to secure funding. So the most notable accomplishment of Emmanuel Jones for Glendale over the last few years was the very complex and lengthy battle that we had with the Department of Finance. And they helped us secure the $45 million of redevelopment loans with interest for the city. They worked very diligently with our legal and economic staff. They worked with the governor's office and our legislative representatives to help get that funding. And moving forward, we're working very extensively with them on affordable housing issues, with Senator Atkins, with Assembly Member Friedman, to come up with some sort of revenue generating affordable housing option for the state. So before you, it was a contract for three years with two one-year renewal options. We'd like to continue working with them. They're doing good work for us and be happy to answer any questions.
How much that amount was, you said with the Department of Finance?
$45 million.
Any questions? Mr. Zagajanian?
I mean, there are, over the years, it says, there have been many other accomplishments by this company. And just reading 2001, it says they brought $2 million and five other local agencies obtained funding for 2000 State Park Bond Act. You mean, if we wouldn't have them, we wouldn't get this?
I can't answer that question from 2000, Councilmember Zagajanian. But they did help, they did play a part in that, whether it's lobbying efforts, you know, talking to the right people. I can't say for certain whether that money would come in with or without them.
Because that was a bond act. I can't, I mean, there are certain things here that I, I mean, I'm sure, yeah.
It's just that some, some... Bond money is per capita that you get no matter what, that nobody really would help you get. Other elements of bond funds oftentimes are competitive. And having a lobbyist, and I would venture a guess that in this particular case, having a lobbyist guide you through that process has been very helpful in getting competitive bond money. It's not necessarily the per capita. I totally agree. But on the competitive grants, certainly.
And then I have a question. It says on the page four, I don't know if you have page four. It said, "The agreement between the city of Glendale and Emmanuel Jones executed in 2013," and then gives the detail of 7,000 per month and other expenses. And at the end of that paragraph, it says, "This resulted in a four-year agreement with a cost not to exceed 340,000, $340,400." Now we are at the end of the term practically. What's the real amount? At that time, we agreed to that figure, but what's the real amount now?
So the item before you would give them an increase. So in the time that we had a contract with Emmanuel Jones, there was no increase in the monthly retainer, so 7,000 a month for the, all four years. So at this time, they're asking for a slight...
I want to go back again. I know we didn't pay 7,000 per month all four years. But then there was some expenses, reimbursement expenses. But at the end said at the time that there was a cost not to exceed 340,000. As you are saying now, for this time, after five years, will not be more than 468,000, right?
Yes.
I'm just wondering, did we pass that 340,000 or what's the figure then? Because we are at the end of the term.
It would be something less than the not-to-exceed amount because it's, the 1,200 dollars is the reimbursement amount for their expenses. So the idea is that you have the 340, that's the outside of the envelope of what that cost would be. It'll be something less than that.
I bet they came close. Yeah, but it's a good question.
No, I, I would venture a guess that they do come awfully close because they're rather robust and they're doing a lot of work for us. I think the takeaway is you can presume, as is pointed out, 340,400 is probably the number or awfully close to it, but not above that number by virtue of the contract as it's laid out.
No, but that contract ends in June 30, right? Because it was 2013, after four years, June 30th will be end of the contract. So what's the figure now? We have to have some idea what the figure is now.
Councilman Bergagianian, John Duckty, Deputy City Manager. I actually drafted this contract along with the city attorney's office many years ago. To answer your specific question, at the end of this contract, in June, we would have expended the full 340,000. There wasn't any additional funding put aside other than the monthly retainer rate plus whatever the reimbursables were, which I think were about $1,000, 1,200 for the year. whatever the reimbursables were, which I think were about $1,000, $1,200 for the year. So we would have essentially spent every last dollar of that, which is what we set out to do in the first place.
Okay, thank you. But just my worries is that we say not to exceed $468,000 now, and then five years later, we may come with $600,000. I, I just wanted to make sure this company, you know, like, kept their word, that they are not going to get more, more than $340,000 at the time. So now we can see their performances. So this way I can rely on them that five years later, we are not going to pay $468,000.
And you wouldn't have to worry about that. Essentially, what we're proposing to you, if you go do the math, is what their monthly retainer rate is, which is a flat amount, plus whatever the reimbursable would be for that entire year for travel expenses, things that we would ask of them for them to come down, make, make presentations to you, or for them to travel to, on certain lobbying efforts. So what we're proposing for the, for the right, the remaining new term is essentially all we could potentially spend. We can't spend any more than what you're seeing here without coming back to council, and we don't intend to do that.
Thank you. Thank you. Any more questions? Is there a motion? I'll move the item.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Zagajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sananian?
Yes. Next item, please.
He is director of human resources regarding proposal for utilization review services for the city's in-house workers' compensation program. He won his motion authorizing to execute a professional services agreement with Preferred Management Corporation for, provide utilization review services for the city's in-house workers' compensation program for a period of three years with two one-year options to renew.
Mr. Mayor, we're asking the clerk to read this next...
Sure. He is director of human resources regarding proposal for bill review services for our city's in-house workers' compensation program. He won his motion authorizing to execute a professional services agreement with Lean On Me, Inc., to provide bill review services for our city's in-house workers' compensation program for a period of three years with two one-year options to renew.
Okay. Sir.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, these items are both very similar. They have to do with various ancillary services that are provided under our, for our in-house workers' compensation program. The first is a, is a request for a professional services agreement for Preferred Management Corporation to provide utilization review services for our in-house workers' compensation program. Utilization review is a program that was established in 2004 during the Schwarzenegger administration, and it was an effort to reform, or one of the various efforts to reform workers' compensation and provide some cost containment and really improve medical treatment for injured employees in the state of California. At the time, there was a great deal of concern about the escalation of costs of, of medical services within the workers' compensation system. And I think the, the general impression that work comp, medical expenses were escalating out of control with little oversight or regulation. And by the, the, the medical services, I'm talking about things like, you know, physical therapies, MRIs, even surgeries and things like that. Utilization review sets forth nationally-recognized standards of care for the treatment of employee injuries under a program called the Medical Treatment Utilization Schedule. And that's what determines essentially the, or sets guidelines for the frequency, duration, and the appropriateness of various types of medical treatment. Obviously, this is a very important element in cost containment. The second RFP, or professional services agreement you're, you're being asked to review is, is for a company called Lean On Me. They provide bill review services for our in-house workers' compensation program. Bill review is another cost containment program as set forth in the Labor Code to control charges from medical providers who treat our injured employees. Under the Labor Code, workers' compensation providers are only required to pay medical costs that are based on something called a medical fee schedule, and that's adopted by the administrative director of the, of the state of California Workers' Compensation Division. Essentially, they, these companies review the bill and, and complete what's known as an explanation of review, an EOR. And that's kind of, it's similar to what's known as an EOB, if you're, if you ever go through your medical bills. Basically, they make recommendations for what should be paid based on that aforementioned medical fee schedule. And they also defend us in case of, of a dispute between us and the medical providers. Again, these are both very, very important cost containment ancillary services for the workers' compensation system. For both of these RFPs were released at the same time earlier this year. For the, the one for utilization review, we actually had two respondents. They came back very close. However, we're opting to recommend that we go with Preferred Management Corporation. They are the incumbent company. We have good experience working with them. And between the two, they have significant amount more experience than the other alternative. Preferred Management has been in business, or they've been doing utilization review services since 2004, which is when utilization review came into effect. The other company has only been at this since about 2012. So our recommendation would be to go with Preferred Management. With regard to the bill review services, we had three respondents for that RFP, one of which was, was non-compliant. It didn't, it looked like a very important component of that, of the RFP. The two remaining ones was CompStar and Lean On Me. And we opted to go with Lean On Me based purely on cost. CompStar's services were $7 per bill, whereas CompStar's was $1,295 per bill, which projecting that over our, over our service level would end up costing probably $40,000 more per year with, with going with them. So we've, we've selected Lean On Me. So with that, if you have questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them. Again, both these would be for professional services agreements for three years with two additional one-year options for renewal.
Obviously, we have the option to renew, right?
If you, Councilmember, Member Zagajanian, if you approve this motion as, as it exists, we administratively could, could renew those, only for those two additional one-year terms. Staff could do that if, if the motion is approved as submitted.
Any questions? I have a question. So between the two, the fiscal impact is 155, 160,000 plus 108,000. What is our savings? What do you think our savings would be by acquiring the services on the workers' comp, comp level?
They would be significant. Cheryl, you may, this is Cheryl Scott, who's our workers' compensation administrator.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, city council members. It, it's hard to determine that because it's based upon how many bills we get in. Basically, bill review, which is the one I think you're talking, you're referring to is the bill review portion of it or both? I'm not certain.
Both.
Okay. On the bill review side, it's based upon the amount of bills that we get in. So some years we do well, some years we don't, you know? If someone is injured, we can't really determine how many bills we're going to get in for an injury. Sometimes we have really bad injuries. Luckily, we've been pretty safe and not very many injuries. So basically, it's based upon how, how many bills we get in. And they kind of check our bills to make, to determine if there's being billed at the appropriate amount. As for utilization review, they make sure that the treatment that's being recommended is appropriate for the condition.
I think that's where the savings will come in because...
Excuse me?
I think that's where the, the, the savings will come in because if you don't allow extra treatments on top of it...
Yes. That's correct, but it's, it's hard to determine the amount. It's based upon the amount of injuries we have each year, and no one unfortunately knows that a number.
Mr. Mayor, again, when an employee is injured and they have a treating physician recommending surgery or MRI or, or some form of treatment, this is really just a, a check and balance for that to make sure what they're proposing is, is really medically necessary. In some cases, the, the bad part about utilization review is that it, it may cause delays in the treatment that, that the employee is, is trying to get, and it may cause delay in them returning. But for the most part, you know, it's really designed to, to combat any unnecessary surgeries and things of that nature, which can be quite expensive. That could, that can turn a $5,000 claim into a $50,000 or $60,000 claim very easily. So it's, it's a very worthwhile program. And aside from that, it's, it's required by law for us to, to send our, our, our medical treatments through this.
Okay. All right. Thanks very much. Is there a motion?
I'll move the item.
I said... Roll call, please.
Councilmember Zagajanian?
Yes.
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sananian?
Yes.
Mayor Garbetti?
Yes. Next item, please.
Next item is police chief regarding purchase, maintenance, and repair of mobile digital computers and car cameras and related equipment. F1 is motion authorizing the purchasing manager to execute agreements with Coban Technologies, Inc., for the purchase, maintenance, and repair of mobile digital computers and car cameras and related equipment through June 30th, 2018, and amount not to exceed $468,954. Two is resolution of appropriation for the purchase for fiscal year 2016, 17.
Okay. Chief Paul Leides?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. Carl Pollet is deputy police chief. We're before you today, asking for authorization to enter into agreements with Coban for the purchase, repair, replacement, and some spare parts for our mobile digital computers that we use in our cars and our in-car camera systems. Coban provides that integrated solution, solution for us. We actually entered, we actually bought our first Coban in-car camera systems back in 2012, where we bought 58 of these. And they've been in all of our frontline, front-line cars for that many of years, and that's obviously a fairly rugged environment in, in which we operate. Over time, we maintain, we still have some older equipment, and over time, that equipment is now beginning to break and needs to be replaced. And we're looking to maintain a standardized platform. If you work in public safety, one of the things that you're really looking for is to have the same equipment in the same place so that it operates the same way, so that no matter what car you get into as a, as an officer or one of our professional staff that works in the field, you have access to the same equipment. And then in the background, there is value to us in terms of an economy of scale for having interchangeable equipment so that when something breaks, we can swap the equipment around. Or as we're moving cars in and out of a fleet, we have the ability to rapidly do that in a, in a timely fashion. So needless to say, that transition process has continued. We do have some immediate needs. Some of our older equipment has broken down, so we are asking for the ability to immediately purchase some mobile digital terminals for the police department so they can put those into some of our cars immediately to be able to buy a cache of spare parts. We do have a few spares, but we've used some of those parts to work on, to maintain our operational fleet. We'd already budgeted to upgrade our parking enforcement vehicles or part of our fleet this year. The balance is in next year's budget. And then one of the obligations that we have as we have, as we retain these images is we have to be able to provide it for discovery for investigative purposes, which means our records bureau needs to be able to duplicate that. Unfortunately, that device has become inoperable. It's basically broken, and we need to replace that item, and we need to do that sooner rather than later. So we are requesting about $94,000, $94,700 change for this year in order to bring those things to operate. The balance of what we're requesting of the $374,000 is for, is already programmed into next year's proposed budget, and that's to continue the replacement of our equipment to maintain the service contracts and to be able to have the spare parts to maintain these systems. As I said, they are critical for our officers because they are our, our frontline use. Everything goes electronically, so all that information needs to be available and, and functional. Coban is the sole provider of this equipment, the service and, and the parts. And so what we're really asking for is the ability to enter into contracts with them in an amount not to exceed $468,954 through the next fiscal year to replace, repair, and maintain our equipment. If you have any questions?
Mr. Zagajanian?
I, I read this, but I just want to make sure I understand it right. So we are changing the computer in the police car, right? Just the computer? And the video system that takes the pictures and you have to save and record and, and then it says somewhere here in page two, go to standardize equipment and expedite maintenance and repair. So wasn't we doing this before? I know the equipment is old. You have to replace it. But I'm just reading here, wasn't this before the same way? Standardized equipment?
We, we started the transition back in 2012. We still have equipment that is older than 2012, some of which is now breaking. We do not, we do not maintain a lot of spares. When we originally made the transition, we bought what we could fiscally afford at that time. We're now at the point where we have to replace this equipment and in order to expedite the repairs. It's not like we have a lot of spares sitting on the shelf where if one breaks, we can pull one out and then just put one in a police car and say, hey, go off on this. We have cars that we now have out of service at times because we don't have the parts or the spares to replace that. And then, as I said, some of this pre-2012 equipment, it's reached the end of its useful life. It is due for replacement, and as I said, that's scheduled for into, into next year's budget. So, but it is, you know, we still run this as a really lean, mean machine, if you will, fiscally and maintenance-wise. And so we do want to make sure we have those contracts in place where we can expedite the repairs.
Okay. One more question. Okay, we are changing the computer. We are changing everything to do with video equipment, right?
Correct. It is a, Coban for us is an integrated system. So it provides both the mobile digital computer system and it provides the in-car camera system, and all of that integrates.
And how about the storage? Where you're storing it? That will be replaced because five years ago, where you would store your video clips...
You're, you're going to get a little bit on me. I believe that's stored on some of our servers, but what you'll see here is, is the request for the, what I'm going to call the DVD burner, but the image application basically is a system that allows us to access Coban's clips and, and video images and allows them to retrieve it and then provide it either to an investigator officer or for court discovery. And so this way, what we have is an integrated system all the way through so that we can easily capture, store, and recover.
So...
Councilman Devine?
So how many old, old, how much old equipment?
I believe we have about another 37 units or so that are pre-2012.
And what's the, what, what is the life of a...
You're going to tap my tech knowledge, but we're, we're, you're probably, I'm going to, I'm, I'm going to estimate somewhere between five and 10 years. As I said, our 2012 units are doing that. But remember, they're in also a very, very rugged environment where people are in and out of the cars and things are being moved around and jostled.
Three to five years.
But no, we're, 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 if you, if you know, we did the transition, the initial transition in 2012, we're still utilizing that equipment, so...
So this, this might average out to less than $100,000 a year for our equipment?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Councilman Zagajanian?
Has our IT director, Mr. Ganley, consulted with you guys on this?
Yes.
Is he in the loop?
Yes, he is.
He's, he's okay with all this stuff?
He is okay with the purchase of the equipment. In fact, it's in there. The purchase for next year is actually in the Information Services Division budget.
Because historically, I think keeping up with the technology is, is a very expensive, very expensive proposition due to the quick pace at which these things go forth. This may be something to drop into the inbox of our Office of Technology and Innovation. Is that what we call it?
Innovation and performance.
Innovation and performance, to make sure that, that as we, these, I think, are needed immediately, but as you look forward to your next iteration of this, that we really are on the cutting edge, both in terms of technology and pricing efficiency of these things. I know one of the big-ticket items that we didn't discuss in the budget session were the radios. And every few years, we get hit with this huge bill for the radios, and there's really nothing we can do. It's just a technology item that after a few years, the equipment you have is obsolete. So let's try and think ahead with this Office of...
And we'll certainly look forward, as I said, but the, for the, at least for the moment, this equipment is, is serving our, serving our needs.
Don't break it. Rugged environment. I'll show you a rugged environment.
And this is already budgeted for, right? It's in our...
We have...
17, 18 budget.
17, 18 budget.
The, the, the 374. The difference is what is in the current year's budget that PD's looking to redirect.
All right. Is there a motion?
I'll move the item.
I said... I see. Pro call please.
Councilmember Zagajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sananian?
Yes.
Mayor Garpetian?
Yes. What's next, please?
G. S. City Attorney regarding City Council regular meeting schedules. G1 is motion monitoring City Council regular meeting schedule for remainder of 2016-17 fiscal year. Two is a motion establishing City Council regular meeting schedule for 2017-18 fiscal year and canceling specified council meeting.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the item before you is with respect to the remainder of this year's calendar. We have a meeting on May 30th that's been canceled pursuant to last year's motion, as well as, and then the rest of the meetings, regular meetings are set to take place. In addition, as I've noted in the report, the regular meeting scheduled for next year, I put all the dates in the report that would coincide with how we did it this year, but I understand, at least from the mayor's perspective, perhaps to have a few more meetings on some of the Tuesdays after Monday holiday. The only one I would know, for example, the November, the past couple of years, I would say, we've canceled the meeting, the Tuesday meeting before Thanksgiving and the Tuesday after Thanksgiving. That's probably one where you can take off one of those meetings and have, one of those cancellations and have the meeting. Everything else is in there, and then it's up to the council to decide how many meetings to have for next year.
It would be my opinion, if we're going to do that, make the Thanksgiving change to have our meeting on Tuesday before Thanksgiving and not the Tuesday afterwards. That'd be my suggestion.
Right. And I would only add with respect to that, it's much more difficult than the purpose of the agenda preparation that the clerk's office has to do, to prepare an agenda on the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, so it'd be better to cancel that, have that Tuesday meeting and then cancel the Tuesday after Thanksgiving.
I agree with the one after Thanksgiving.
Is canceled.
Right.
And just by way of perspective, the reason why that one got canceled in the first place is there are a lot of folks who travel that week of Thanksgiving, so the amount of business that comes before the council has historically been light, and thus became more than, why have the meeting? So that was the rationale, the context behind it, but council's free to do whatever you wish.
Right. I think we need to have that meeting, but if we don't have any items on our agenda, we can also cancel it at that time and send a cancellation notice. I think the Tuesdays after the long weekends, if there's a Monday of long weekend and then the Tuesday, we cancel the meeting, I think I have a little issue with that. I think like the January sixteenth, after Martin Luther King Day, after the President's Day, after the Memorial Day, after the Labor Day, those are the dates that I think we can have meetings because we have so many items that we want to talk about and, you know, discuss different issues, and we ask, like in the last two weeks, we loaded our management with different reports that we want them to bring back to council, and we need to have time to review those reports and discuss them in a timely fashion. So I think those dates, the ones right after the Monday holiday, I think these are the ones that we can still have meetings on.
Even July 5th?
Not July, I didn't say July 5th. I said January.
Labor Day and King Day?
Yes. Those are, I mean, you know, President's Day, day after President's Day, you know, three-day weekends is the max I can do. If I can do that, I'm really good. But if we don't have a quorum at that time, we can cancel it. And if you don't have a quorum, I'd like to have those dates reinstated, if you will. After Labor Day, Martin Luther King Day, President's Day, Memorial Day, and I don't know, what's GST, spring break? What is?
So the last couple of weeks technically canceled the Tuesday meeting during the spring break.
On that whole week, yeah. Okay, that's fine. You can keep that.
What's the rationale behind that?
People are away with their kids. That may include staff and council members.
Somehow I still have little kids, Mr. Najarian. We want to, not me, but a lot of them are leaving town on that day. But if it's council's pleasure to have a meeting on that day, I don't have a problem either, but I think that's one, two, three, four, five, that's five, five meetings that we can add to our meetings. Six, actually.
Six, if you add the twenty-first of November.
So will we be dark May 30th? I saw that as a day that was dark and planned a vacation.
I don't know about May 30th. I mean, if we have a, I know the notice was sent out to be dark, and if you plan the vacation, I don't know if the rest of the council wants to have a meeting or not, or if you have any...
So it's mainly budget. I mean, the critical issue at that time is budget. Budget follow-up and questions being answered and all that. And I don't, I mean, Mr. Ochoa, are you getting the sense that we have a lot of issues? Because we'll be dark next week, the 23rd.
Sure. I think the, what I took away, we had more discussion today on fees and charges, which is typical, than other items, and so given the types of direction we got and the range of options coming back to you, I don't think that would be difficult for you to make policy on the sixth as opposed to the 30th. I mean, the 30th gives us more time to prepare, but I don't know that it's essential from the staff perspective to have that meeting to prepare you for the sixth.
Is the sixth an early morning session also, or it's just the evening?
No, that's a good point. You could have a 10 o'clock meeting on the sixth just to finalize anything heading into the hearing, although if there were significant changes, I'll defer to City Attorney, because if there were significant departures, we might not be able to get that, we wouldn't be able to get that on your agenda for the evening.
That's what I'm saying. I mean, if you have it on the 30th, then you have another week to, yeah, if you have it on the 30th, then you have another week to put it on the agenda and make the necessary changes. Yes, Mr. Najarian.
What we are doing on June 6th again?
June 6th is the hearing that's required by the charter for the adoption of a budget. So you'll hold a public hearing on the sixth, on the evening of the sixth, but not vote on the budget. You'll actually vote on the budget on the 13th, the following Tuesday.
Nice.
So that's the actual action date.
So we are not voting on 6th?
You are not voting on the 6th. Like I said, the biggest takeaways that we had from the budget process, I think overall, discussion about PERS and how to deal with that, discussion about some of the fee items that came up today. And I mean, ultimately, it's going to be, does the council want to charge full freight on mural design review or something less than full freight for mural design review? And there were a couple of other items, but I don't think that those were necessarily overpowering. So it truly is council's pleasure.
Again, I think we need to have a meeting on the 30th. It will give us more chance, especially with, you know...
Yeah, the only thing is, that's really not fair. It was scheduled to be dark. I planned a vacation. I think it's important, if the council's going to meet, I want to be there. I mean, I think it sets a bad precedent to do this sort of thing.
We definitely don't want to set a bad precedent.
I know. We should have enough time, I think, on the 6th to handle this stuff.
I would only comment on the budget item. I do think that if you had a hearing, or sorry, if you had a study session in the morning of the 6th, if we felt we needed to have it, I think it's still okay then to go ahead with the 6th. Only thing we couldn't do is add a fee from the 6th in the morning to the afternoon, but we're talking about, basically, here's the range of options. You're going to maybe tweak certain things and then come back at the hearing. I think that's permissible if that's where the council wanted to have more information come back before the hearing on the 6th. And don't forget, you'll have the hearing, and then you'll also have the meeting of the 13th to have further discussion on these items.
Right. And this morning, we had a two-hour session. We went out to two and a half hours, same thing with last week, because it's not enough time, there's so much information, there's not enough time in two hours to review the whole thing, and you power through it, which is fine, but then it doesn't give you enough chance to maybe ask the right questions or discuss the matters a little bit further. Again, if we can have a meeting, just an informational meeting on the 30th, I'll be okay. If not, it's fine as well.
Mr. Ochoa, do you have any idea what kind of agenda we're looking at on the 6th? Is it only going to be the budget, or are there going to be any other, a lot of other items? Do you have any idea at this point?
I believe we try to keep that meeting light. I don't think on the 6th, because that's the hearing, I don't think we have anything too significant on the 6th. Historically, we don't. I want to say we have an appeal hearing on the 13th for a DRB review, but then again, on the 13th, when you take the vote on the budget, that should be rather straightforward by then.
So it seems that the agenda's going to be light, we should have...
And that's another issue, because we are dark next week. We will be dark the following week, and the third week from today will be a light agenda. Kind of, it just puts the other businesses on the back burner, if you will. So I personally had an issue with canceling too many meetings, but this is only one meeting. I don't want to go back and forth on this. It's council's pleasure if you, we can, you know, if it's...
Can we hear from Mr. Sananian?
One we don't ask everybody. Why we don't ask? I'm okay with having a meeting on the 30th. I'm okay with not having it if, I think the point that the mayor's making, if I understand it correctly, and I agree with, is we should have the meetings as frequently as possible, right? I mean, that's the fundamental issue they're trying to address. It seems like at times, we're starting to get used to taking breaks, and then everything gets crammed into one or two or three meetings that go one after the other, and there's really no need for it because not having everything concentrated in a few meetings allows us to better prepare for it and staff to space things out more proportionally. So I agree with that train of thought.
So...
May 30th?
We want to...
You want to take a vote on it?
I'm okay with May 30th because this way we can ask questions about the budget. I'm okay, but if you guys are okay with it.
Mr. Najarian, would you be, because I want you to be okay with it.
You guys, I'm on vacation. We have published this, we have published this since the beginning of the year, even before when we set our schedule last year. May 30th is dark. What happened to May 23rd? May 23rd, there was a scheduled meeting that is going up in the air because...
There's no quorum.
Well, why is there no quorum?
Because every, no, because every year I...
It's a scheduled meeting. Why is there no quorum? For whatever reason, I think being absent, you know, it's much worse to put a date on a, to resume a council date, to reinstall a council date where originally there was none. I mean, I relied on that, and I took a vacation, which is different than seeing a council date and being missing for it.
I'd like to be joining us through Skype.
That's a whole nother story.
No, I mean, we really want to be fair, and I don't know, the agenda that we will be scheduling or agendizing, the items that we'll be agendizing will be anything different, but mostly is for us, newer council members, to ask more questions and go through the items that we wanted to go through and ask the questions that we didn't have a chance to ask this morning or the week before, and the week before, actually.
The state, though, the May 30th being dark was basically indicated to us from the beginning of the year, right? When the schedule was passed out, so last June? Okay, so Mr. Najarian has had almost a year to rely on this information.
So rely on the information that it's going to be dark, yeah. Okay, no, again, I wanted to be fair, I, you know...
I would, I mean, I would regret if I wasn't, you know, if I was in town, I'd say, sure, let's do it, but...
Okay, but if needed, can we have a special meeting during the week based on the schedule?
Yeah.
I mean, a special meeting during the week, maybe a two-hour meeting during the week?
I'm okay with that.
Okay, that's fine. Then 30th is canceled, and if there is a need, we will schedule a special meeting during that week and move forward. Okay. What's next, please?
Motion and second to adopt this proposal.
Yeah, on G2 for next year, you at least need a motion to remove the following days from the cancellation date, September 5th, November 28th of 2017, and then January 16th, February 20th, and May 29th of 2017.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. September 5th, November 28th, or November 21st?
November 28th would be the day that would, I'm sorry, you're right, November 21st.
21st.
Right. Then January 16th, February 20th, and May 29th.
January 16th, February 20th, May 29th. Okay, so that will give us one, two, three, four, five more meetings.
Yeah, and if we need to cancel because of...
Right, before a...
For example, we'll...
And this is for next week, or this, I mean, next year or this year?
Next year. Coming this year, seventeen eighteen.
Okay. So basically, the November and the, okay, got it.
So moved.
Second.
Pro call please.
Councilmember Zagajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sananian?
Yes. Yes. What's next, please?
Next is oral communication. Discussion is limited. Time is not part of this agenda. Speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. And City Manager Mayor for the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and a report.
Okay, I have one speaker card. Daniel Brotman.
Good evening, Mayor Garpetian and council members and staff. You've seen me here before. My name is Daniel Brotman. I am a resident of Verdugo Woodlands, and I teach part-time at Glendale College. Teach economics. I'm here today because I want to start a conversation on climate change, which is a subject I've been thinking a lot about, I've been working a lot on as a volunteer with a group called Citizens Climate Lobby and another group called Californians for a Carbon Tax. Before I get into my ask, I want to run through some basic facts. The first one is that it's not a Chinese hoax. It's not caused by sunspots, and it's not a result of natural cycles. The climate is warming because of human activity, specifically our burning of fossil fuels. There's such an overwhelming consensus among scientists that it's almost silly to have to keep saying it. Given this distinguished group, I really don't think there's any need to debate the point. But having said that, the situation is actually a lot more pressing than most people realize. Even myself, who thinks about this a lot, often kind of goes, you know, goes into a lull and kind of forgets about the urgency of the issue. We've been hearing a lot about the Paris agreements. And just so you know, the Paris Agreement set a goal of keeping global temperatures from exceeding two degrees centigrade above pre-industrial levels. You've probably heard that number, two degrees. They call this the red line because scientists are saying if we go above two degrees, we set off irreversible changes that kind of, in a feedback loop, would make parts of the world uninhabitable, disrupt food systems, trigger massive migrations, and I know this sounds dramatic, but would genuinely threaten our survival as a species. In fact, even in Paris, a lot of people are saying two percent is too high, that the number should be one and a half percent, but the official agreement was two percent, and over a hundred ninety heads of state, backed by almost every climate scientist, agreed that under no circumstance should we allow ourselves to exceed that. The worrying part is that the actual commitments that were made in Paris, as you probably know, don't add up to that goal. If all the countries were to achieve what they promised in Paris, global temperatures are expected to still rise about 3.7 or 3.8 degrees above pre-industrial levels. That's almost double the red line, and with the current administration, it's really not clear if we will even achieve those Paris commitments. And for some context, it's important to remember that all the effects of climate change that we've seen so far, things like record-breaking temperatures year after year, the droughts here in California and elsewhere, coastal flooding, migration of mosquito-borne diseases northward, arguably even the Syrian catastrophe, which is generally attributed to drought that is climate change-related. All of these things are the result of just one degree of warming. That's what the world has experienced so far, one degree of warming, okay? So now think of that multiplied by four, and that's what we're talking about. And we're not talking about the distant future. Do I only have 50 seconds? We're not talking about the distant future. We're talking about the end of the century within the lifetimes of children born today, our children. Just the other day, my daughter, who's 25, who's studying to be a teacher, was telling me that she thinks it's immoral to bring a child into this world, given what we know about the future. It breaks my heart because I think she'd be a wonderful mother, but she's saying now she doesn't think it makes sense. So why talk about this here? Basically because Washington has turned its back on the problem. We can't count on a national-level fix, and if the U.S. retreats, so will other national governments. And that's why Calif... And that's why California and other states and many, many US cities are taking things into their own hands. It's now up to us at the local level, was that five minutes? It's up to us at the local level to pick up the torch. Can I just have like 30 seconds? So my ask is that I just hope to follow through, follow up with each of you to talk about what more we can do here. Are we being vocal enough as a city in terms of raising awareness of the issue? More importantly, what are we doing with our electricity portfolio, which is easier to control than most other sources of, of emissions? Do we have a special opportunity now with grace and repowering to really take a harder look at renewables and storage? And there's a lot more we can talk about. So thank you for your time, and I hope it's okay if I can follow up, as I have already with some of you by email, but follow up and, and see if I can get more involved in this process. Thank you.
What is next, Mr. Casakes?
Is there any new business?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
You are adjourned.